So patiently.
Sorry, ran over.
Took a little longer than I expected.
We have a few things on the agenda for this village of Manaway. As you are aware, citizens in Manaway opted to implement a process that is provided for in your ordinances. They created a referendum on the ordinance that provided for the agreement where their council voted, I think it was, I know it was five to six, to enter into an agreement with the county. It never was brought to the board because we had this thirty day period and two weeks into it, they actually filed a referendum. The mayor has asked for us to go back and open discussions again, which I'm fine with. Find out what a good answer is to go looking for it. But in the process of that occurring from then to now, we've had a letter go to the mayor's office basically saying, well, we understand we need some money. And that that money should be about twenty dollars a month and that twenty dollars a month should take care of all our problems. And part of what you have in front of you is the analysis completely by water resources. Basically saying that, okay, all you're doing is kicking a can down the road and you're doing two point five million of ten million dollars worth of work in thirty years or sooner. You're gonna have another twenty million dollars to deal with. So nothing beats getting it done quicker because of the time back and forth. So in that, we put together some bullet points from our perspective and I'm sure the mayor will use those after she evaluates our analysis. And basically, the end of the last page is my recommendation to go ahead and send her a communication agreeing on her schedule to go ahead and open up discussions again about the merger. If there's no objection, we'll go ahead and send the letter out to basically stating that.
Jean, in reference to a letter from eighty Ben or? I think we had that.
Here's a, obviously like it came from the mayor to our, at the time, we had one with you.
It's okay. I just wonder what it said. I just wanted to see when it's.
If there's a lesson to be learned from all these processes, more public input has always been important. You know, part of the process needs educating of the why. The how is sometimes the painful part, how are you gonna solve the problem? But the why that needs to be solved is paramount.
So what happens, what happens in the interim period during the negotiation?
Effective December twenty seventh at five P M, we operate as operator record their plans. We were doing so at a rate of seven to ten thousand dollars a month, depending upon what broke and what we had to fix. They have a company called EnviroLink that specializes in doing just what we were doing. The problem is it's considerably more expensive. It's about seventeen thousand dollars a month. Plus all the other costs of things that break.
How does that make sense, Jean?
Well, per my recommendation and thank you for following, if we can't keep doing what we're doing, all we're doing is allowing our facilities to slide. But equally, I think that a roomful of people being upset about what was being asked of them to pay eighty six dollars a month surcharge to fix these issues creates some concern. Is there movement in that number? Not a lot, not from our perspective. As I tried to say in the first paragraph and what's before you. Anything we do to decrease your cost of updates and maintenance and repair to your facilities has to come from someplace, which is our current customer base. We're taking on an insurmountable risk. I think we've done a pretty good analysis of the condition of their assets. But anything that's not on this needs list is ours to deal with. So we've got a piece of this pie that's unknown to us. Who knows what can happen? It's no different than what can happen at our shavers though, right down the river. It's the identical thing. We're gonna have to deal with those things. It's more cost effective to do it on more larger population base. The census being sixty thousand plus five hundred, I mean, there's a big difference in the number of customers. That's the key element. We started with the mayor and she was in agreement and reiterated it with the council committee that we dealt with in negotiating the terms and then ultimately with the council as a whole when they voted to pass the resolution necessary to implement the agreement, that we had to keep it fair. We can't take on something that is not gonna be paid for by those who are using it. Well, I say, well, your customers will use it. Our customers don't need it, in plain and simple. The things that need to happen, like an emergency unit connect from three oh three where our water line exists up to Manaway is more to their benefit to ours. So we, they didn't wanna pay for that fifty fifty. So, okay, then we'll take all the customers that have come to it in time and you'll pay twenty five percent. So we negotiated back and forth in what I think is good faith. I think what's on the table is reasonable, but maybe they have some other options. There is one gentleman, and I wish I could remember his name, but it's not before my memory right now. He's a mechanical engineer, I think by training. He was vocal in that the Manaway should get benefit for anything outside of their current service area, which we don't disagree with, except how do we cover our risk in this if we don't take customers outside the service area? We left the entire service area, which is outside of the corporate boundaries of the village, to be what was going to be their benefit inside, which is where they're limited to now. If we, Manaway Corners, for example, forty four and eighty two, if we were to build a water line up there, they'd be our customers, we would receive the full benefit. So if we extend a water line north out of Manaway to provide water at Manaway Corners, that's our dime to extend it. That's our cost to extend. So why are you gonna get benefit from that? It was the question that's, there was no answer provided. I think they walked away thinking about it. I don't believe this needs anything. We didn't wear enclosure because of the thirty day referendum. As long as we are in agreement in principle, we'll go back and make another meeting happen.
I was gonna say, I mean, like you said, you don't seem to have much wiggle room to make any real modifications. So you just think the key component here is educating the public on this? Because, so we don't have to, hopefully they won't do another referendum on somebody?
I have to see where it unfolds. I don't, I don't know exactly what they have planned. The second issue is the Fairlane Water Company. Back a month ago, we obtained to the health department a copy of the findings and orders issued to the owner of the Fairlane Water Company. Fairlane Water Company provides service to the same people we provide service for out of our Fairlane wastewater treatment plant. Fairlane is a sub-development northeast corner of two twenty four and Congress Road. The owner has some illness that he's dealing with and contacted us in circa twenty sixteen wanting to know if we wanted to buy the plant. And so we took it to her and said, no.
No.
It is a below ground plant, which I'm not sure how it was ever approved, even in the seventies when it was built. If it floods, you're now pumping dirty water into people's drinking water. I don't know if that's ever happened, but that's the reason they try and build it higher out of the floodplain. So a basement is definitely a floodplain. The findings and orders were eight pages long, the extent of, the one response that has come to us via the EPA was basically he's gonna walk away and that in so doing, he's just recommending everybody out there, which is a hundred and eighteen customers, drill it on well. That probably is not the most cost effective resolution. We're not willing, nor would I recommend to support buying him out. But if he walks away from it, we're back in matchbook right now looking at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build a new water plant on the property that's owned out there that we need to take ownership of. There are two wells. I'm not sure if one of the, I know one of the wells is on the property, but the other ones, it looks like it's in somebody's backyard. So, I mean, there are issues that need to be resolved. It's a property that butts the, the Fairlane Water Company butts the two twenty four right away and there's no driveway back to it. So there's hopefully some easement across somebody's property. They gains us access. Because it's in a basement, there's no heat. Once you put it above ground, you're gonna need to put a gas line in. So there's all kinds of issues and that doesn't take into account the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Do we need to drill new wells? That's an additional cost. Do we need to replace the water line that's in the ground? Again, an additional cost. But if you use, and again, our six hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget number that we think is fairly accurate, that comes out to about five thousand five hundred dollars per resident. If they go and drill their own wells, I think about the cheapest they would be able to do if they went together and had them all drilled simultaneously. It's probably in a neighborhood of seven thousand five hundred or, I'm just throwing that number out from experience. So seventy five hundred dollars versus fifty five hundred dollars, it would be cheaper for them to come to us and ask us.
And do they all have the lot size and requirements and stuff to put their own well on?
I think the only time a lot size becomes an issue is with septic, not with a private well.
But if they can't get the, do they have service there on our service?
They're on our service. They'd have to put them in the backyard. They can't put them in the front yard because of the separation requirement from the sanitary.
It's usually building separation and property line separation for the well.
How would they pay for this, Jean? I mean, how would?
Well, it could be a surcharge, could be an assessment.
Okay, so we get a lot of flexibility.
Lot of flexibility and my recommendation, knowing the gentleman that owns the property, that unless he's changed his mind, we should just wait. You know, I wouldn't take any action until the residents come forward or he comes forward.
Do the residents know what's going on? I mean?
I believe they do, but I have not reached out to them. I don't know if they'll lose it. I could maybe walk around and talk to a few of them. But having said that, I know that Sherry Louts from the R cap, Ohio Executive Officer, has a meeting with the EPA, I believe now on January sixteenth, with the owner of Fairlane Water Company to discuss this. Just wanted to make you aware, if you hear things, that's what it's about.
We did have an event that occurred this week. I just wanted to give you guys a heads up in case you get involved. We had a sewer line break in Streetsboro on State Route fourteen. It was a horse main break. And we were notified of it Monday morning, but we believe, we were notified by the Streetsboro employees, but we think it started on Friday afternoon on the third. There was an odor noticed by a Streetsboro employee and then Monday morning they noticed that they looked like sewage and that they looked like a leak on that horse main. So we were notified of it. We notified the EPA within an hour. We were out there. That line was clamped and that was done around two ten P M when we left the site. The next morning, we were notified again that there was a leak on that line. So next to the clamp, that line had broken another hole. It's an, it's an older line. It's nineteen sixty five. I believe it's a cast iron cement line, line. So what we did is we replaced an eight, that whole eighteen foot section out there and we're continuing to monitor it. The EPA was notified. Nothing got into any waters of the state, but we believe somebody was out there taking pictures. We don't know if it was someone from the EPA. The health department was also notified of it and right now there's nothing other than our normal follow up with the EPA that we need to do or written report summary. So they didn't need to come out and do any sampling or anything like that.
Thank you.
One additional issue from my side, the state chemical is one of our vendors. They provide us the chemicals that we use for odor control. They've invited myself to be part of a panel to discuss where their industry and general is going. It's on January twentieth at two forty five, so absent any objection, I'll take my personal vehicle.
Where's that at, Jean?
At the airport. I think they're flying people in from all over the country. Cleveland Hopkins.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time. Thanks again for waiting.
You know what? Should we call Todd and Joanne and because they want to talk about public records requests? I think that ties in with the prosecutor.
Hi.
Okay.
How you doing, Chris?
Good. How's everyone? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Maybe so. Job and family services canceled, right? Is she coming up for anything?
No, she's coming on the twenty eighth.
Is Joanne coming up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I know nobody likes to come up here, but she might as well come up here. All right, Todd, you can't sit back there either.
Are you doing other stuff first or are you starting right with that?
Does Chris need to be here for everything?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I know this, but you know.
Is Joanne coming up?
Here we go. I think I've got that company.
Oh, wonderful.
I was looking yesterday, right? I was over there. I got getting my lunch there. Just on like a pile of bread, so.
Well, they have other things there. They, they make like on Fridays, they have like a pizza night.
Do they?
And you can go in and have, they make wine and pizza.
I went to Akron and my Schwab's was still operating just down the road. And so sometimes for lunch, I would just go get a big loaf of bread.
I love the smell.
Great harvest that come down. Stove's good.
Yeah. We must be hungry.
No, I think you get anyway.
A little stack out of my bag.
It's almost, it is tender, yeah.
Hi, Joanne.
Hey, Joanne.
Joanne looks like a new lady with that hair color. I like it.
Hey. Changing up for the new year. You know, come in.
I like it.
Happy New Year.
Thank you, you guys.
Are we going through executive session right away?
I'm not through the first one, right? Public records request?
We can keep that public, not if we want to, either way. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with it. I'm pretty straightforward with it.
I think there's some things that need to be.
I know part of our issue, it's just chaotic. It's not very clear who holds what records within even your offices, I guess. In other words, am I responsible for the budget documents and budget requests that come in me? Or are those records being sorted and held by the commissioner's office, which is basically Amy, Julie and Judy? Are we supposed to give them the things and they take the requests? You know, we're, we have a request right now from Pete, who's requesting public requests from us. But he's requesting them because they came from an attorney who's suing us. We don't know if the prosecutor's office saw and has sorted through that. I mean, it's, it's just kinda crazy as to how things are coming and we're not sure who we're supposed to give what and how the people are supposed to be responded to. So I think that's one issue. The next issue becomes particularly in regard to the jail, we're getting a lot of requests for things that I genuinely don't feel are our documents to begin with, however they have been given to us. And to the extent that you guys have done something with them, then maybe they are our document. If you've done an official type of action, if you haven't, maybe they're still not. But what we're running into is these people telling us, well, I know they have it, but we don't know that you have it. It's just crazy. And so we wanna get some of that sorted out as well. And then the last piece is the fees that we charge. When do we charge someone? When don't we charge someone? As our policy need updated, it was written fifty years ago when all there was was paper. Now there's a lot of other options, however, because we don't list those options, so.
Does it make it not viable?
And I have a question, Chris. If we've got a document in a certain media, we don't have it scanned or digitalized, it's just paper. Do, if, if someone asks us to digitalize that and email it to them, do we have to do that or? Okay, so we can't, we need to change our media format to whatever they want?
Yeah.
I've never, I never, I didn't know that.
Now, is that true like just electronic generic or is that true if they want it in an Excel file rather than a PDF? I mean, do we have to convert it into an Excel file? Where is the?
Where's the line?
I guess.
Yeah, let's, let me get you something on that. Let's do it on a case by case basis. But if somebody, if all you have says something on paper and somebody said, can you scan and email me that? Then I think you definitely wanna do that. Now, if you actually have to do to a different type of medium, then let's talk about that case by case. Like you ran into a situation with that.
The video.
The video. That's a little different where.
So let's say I want a ten page document. One of the reasons, electronic is convenient. I don't deny that. One of the reasons though, people are saying scan it is because then that voids the five cent fee. Are we still allowed to charge five cents above five pages if we're, because we're having to store now that file as well on our servers? Our copy, we lease our copiers. We're still, the county's still paying on the, whether you scan or paper, you, that counts as a count on the machine. So it isn't free for us. I mean, these are just some of the issues that we wonder about. If it's one person making one request, it's not a, we deal with those all the time, but we're getting some, I mean, we're talking reams of paper going to people.
Yeah, let's treat it on a case by case basis, but I think generally you do wanna err on the side of being accommodating to eliminate the unnecessary type of headaches down the road. I mean, if somebody comes in with a thousand page request, give, give us a call and we'll work through that. Like you said, for small ones, if you could just scan ten or twelve documents and email.
Because I, I just put out, we're not here because we got one small request. I mean, we've dealt with those all, all the time.
We're here because we get that huge request.
Very large request. We're getting them repeatedly. And like I said, your staff is somewhat confused as to what we're able to tell these people. Oftentimes, our taking the request and then asking you guys, it's, there's an implicit understanding there that now it's on us to do something about it and get back to those people. Or is if we could tell, right, the counter, no, we need you to do this or look, here's what it's gonna be. It would be easier for us to interact on the front side with these people.
And Chris, again, if we're having to pay, we're doing it scanning and we're talking like a thousand page document, why shouldn't they have to pay for that? I mean, is it supposed to cost us that much more money?
Yeah, that's a fair question.
Well, somebody scanning it, the labor is, the labor is being done by someone scanning it.
Exactly. And not only that, but we're paying for scan.
Correct.
We can't charge for labor.
The labor.
I understand that, but the.
The paper, that's a different animal. We'll get you fixed up on that.
I think it's cheaper. I don't know. I mean, it's, we don't, we just don't pay as much if it's a scan only in terms of storage and, and if it falls within our thing. But there is still a cost.
Yeah, we can adjust all that, sure.
I think our staff, our staff is, is very confused because they're not getting direction from us. But the reason they're not getting direction is we don't know, Chris.
Sure. We'll get you out something.
I have a question about something like a video that we don't. It's a video of another county elected official department kept by another county elected official. If we were requested, for example, a jail video, how, I, I would think our answer would be because we do not have a record responsive to that request.
If you don't have custody of that document, then you need to go to the office that has it.
Well, that's part of our question though. Are we to tell that person, I'm sorry, but we don't have this document. You need to go? Or are we to take that request and we forward it to that office?
Just say you don't have a responsive request.
And this happens more often than just the individual. But what happens if they request A, B and C? A is ours, B is the auditor, C is the prosecutors. Are we to say, well, we'll take A request, but you need to take B to the auditor, you need to take C? Are we gonna put that onto the?
I would not do that because it's not up to our staff to know what.
To tell them where to go.
And they may not even know and maybe providing misinformation. No, I think what you do is you answer, we have A.
And that's it.
Here is your responsive.
Hey, we do not have B and C.
I mean, we could, like I said, we'll do it typically. I mean, we had the one from Mr. Ames. It involved the auditor and involved us. I think there was some use of prosecutor in it and Amy was responsible for taking everything and organizing it. And I guess that's the kind of stuff we're asking. Are we just to say, here's the documents we have and the commissioner's office have no other? And then let them deal with, because a lot of the public doesn't understand that.
That we don't have everything, right.
And I get that on the public side.
Then there's also the, the situation that came up where an elected official called me for a certain contract or at least a couple of contracts. And I said, okay, I, you know, we scan them so I can send it up to you. And then the next thing I know, I got a call from Todd and Todd said, I have a request for our, for this contract and these contracts. I'm like, well, this is ironic because the elected official just asked me for the same thing and it was the same person that had gone there asking for double, you know, kind of double. And it's like, that puts us, you know, I mean, did we, you know, if I was making them on behalf of your request and it was copied.
Not the person that wanted the public records.
And it was copied, that there would have been the charge. But if I would have given it to the elected official, I think their intent was just to give the copy to the person or whatever. Yeah. So it makes it, that makes it a little precarious too that.
So I'm understanding if we get a request, our response will be, here's our records. We have no others. Don't even indicate you might wanna go.
No, because we might be wrong.
Now, what, what about?
That's a good, that's a good move there. Then you're misdirecting the public, which I know you're, I get the, trying to help.
Exactly.
What, so what about within your own departments? Is, is, is Joanne responsible for a contract request and she's responsible to send them to the person and receive those requests? Am I responsible for the budgets or are people coming to the seventh floor? Is any request for your office to be taken there? And then who is it that's supposed to go to Joanne and say, I need this? How do you want that flow going? Is Joanne to give it back to like, but I'm just gonna use Amy right now? Is Amy supposed to say, Joanne, I need these contracts? Joanne gives them to Amy. Amy sends it to the person? Is Amy supposed to send the request to Joanne and then Joanne says? Joanne gets a lot of requests directly. So do I because they know I'm the budget person, she's the contract person. But then you get other people who don't know where to go. I, I guess that's just the question is, do you want the more organized?
We have them, you know, the contracts are, we, we have the original documents. We've scanned them. So when anybody wants one, if it's, you know, a person coming in and they don't, can't take a media, we would make the copy and, you know, handle it that way. And if it's somebody else that wants just a, you know, a digital copy, we send that. Always have, because those are records in my department that I have on my record retention schedule that I get done at a time. That's kind of what I've always followed by, just to add into that. So that might help make the decision.
Some of the confusion here is one person is going to different people with the same thing.
Like I said, a contractor going to Joanne and saying, I want a contract is super easy. Even if a contractor comes to me and says, I want a contract, I know where to send them. It's when people come in and say, I want this and that and that and that, and it's across five different departments. I guess that's where we start getting lost of, well, is Joanne supposed to send it back so we know that it was sent? Is she just supposed to send it out? We're to assume it's done?
Whoa. I think if they, I think if, for me, and I could be wrong about this, it'd be helpful if, when you're responding to a public records request,
it'd be helpful if, when you're responding to a public records request, that our clerk is copied, just so she knows.
Knows it went out.
But she is not, like, she doesn't need to get, if Joanne gets one, Joanne just copy, you don't need to ask Amy or involve her. I think when somebody comes to the counter with a multi-part request that involves different departments, that is when I believe Amy would coordinate, okay, Todd, we need this, Joanne, we need this. And then Amy, you need to make, and if you need help with this, Chris is available. If there are non-responsive, things we cannot be responsive to, then that would be stated in response to that request.
But then would Amy send it out or would they send it out, just let Amy know? I mean.
Amy, I would think would send it out.
Okay, they would.
She's going to collect it because it's actually came up here, the request came to you guys. That makes sense, you know, too.
That's how we did the last one, this big one. And documents that I have that refer to the Sheriff's Department, I gave the phone number and the contact over there after talking with Chris.
But we don't even necessarily want to do that, is that, I mean.
Yeah, but you know what, that's easier said than done because the public wants direction. Because they're going to say to you, Todd, if you don't have it, where do I go? You're going to say, oh, we don't have it and you think that's going to solve it? I mean, where do we direct them to? We are public servants and they're looking to us for direction. I mean, they understand that we don't have it. But when we say, we just don't have it and you're not going to give them direction as to where to go to, you have to give them a resource to figure out where to go.
I don't think you have to do that. I just think it gets, it is asking our staff to know about all the different, I mean, millions of records that the county has.
Yes, but I don't think you understand Kathleen, some of the people that come up here and they're not always necessarily nice to our staff. And I can see it becoming an issue. So how would we address that? What is a compromise for that? And I can think of the one that went to the elected official and came back up here. I mean, she's up here all the time and she gets, she can get pretty nasty. So that's what I'm asking.
And I told Todd he doesn't have to tolerate that, he doesn't, the nastiness.
Well, I understand that.
I mean, I think you politely, not meanly.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that, but they're going to look to us, where do we send them to? If we don't know, they're going to say, well, who do I contact? How do I get this information? I mean, because I can understand on the public side, the perception being that we're trying to hide something or why wouldn't the Commissioner's Office know? That's why I'm asking, is there someone that we can direct them to that could help them versus saying, we just don't have it? Because I don't think that's really an appropriate way to handle the situation. We should be able to direct them at least to a source that maybe would have that information.
And I disagree. I think it's appropriate to tell somebody, I'm sorry, we don't have a record that's responsive to that request.
Chris, what do you think about that?
I think one alternative is to qualify it, like if you know the sheriff probably does have it, tell them that the county commissioners do not have it, but you might want to check the sheriff's office. You can't provide them legal advice. You can say, we could suggest you go out there, though we're not saying it's out there for sure.
We're not for sure, you might want to start there.
Some of those requests might be fairly straightforward. Like that lady who was pro se, who made all the requests last month, a lot of her requests she needed to go out to sheriff's office to get. So I think that's kind of something you could suggest to them to go out there. Again, you can't give legal advice to them, but point them in the right direction.
Well, that's what I'm saying, because they're looking to us as public servants or customer service. I mean, for someone, when I know they should go to the Sheriff's Department, I mean, it would be easy for us to say, I'm sorry, we don't retain those records here, you may look to the Sheriff's Department for that information. What does that hurt? Let them call the sheriff and, you know, figure it out. But just to say, we don't have that record and not give them any kind of help or assistance, I think will be poorly received and I think it's going to create issues.
I think if they don't know where to send people, they don't have the duty to try to figure it out. If it's obvious that it's the sheriff, I think that makes a lot of sense if it's unclear.
But regardless, you don't want us sending the request.
No, 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 absolutely not.
You don't want us trying to get the documents from the sheriff before we're allowed.
We only would want Amy to coordinate documents that pertain to the Commissioner's departments. Like if someone asks for something, she could get it from Joanne, from you. But if someone wants something from you, Joanne, and then they'll say the Sheriff's Department or the prosecutors, obviously Amy would not coordinate that. We would say, you may want to check with this department, we do not have those records.
They need to submit the custodian of that record.
Yeah, exactly.
So the sheriff's office, treasurer's office.
Well, the Commissioner's is confusing though, because we've got water resources. Technically, all their documents are there, but you guys are the custodian of those records. But anyway, I mean, we can handle that.
But those are our departments, we should be able to.
But our question is, does Amy just turn it over to them and then she's done? They have to get it to the person?
No, because I think the market.
Or are they supposed to go back to Amy and Amy send it out? I guess that's.
I think it would go to the original request or whoever they went to. If it's our department, Amy, I would think it would be up to Amy to coordinate to get that information from our departments.
So like Water Resources would send the information to Amy and then she would send it out?
Yeah, because I think.
That's not what we just said though, wasn't it? It's that.
Well, if they come to.
If they come to me.
What if it's a water-only request?
If they come to me, I'm going to be able to send it out like I always have.
Okay, so you don't send, see, before I said this, Todd and Joanne send it to Amy and.
If Amy gets a request that has a bunch in there, like me and Todd, that's when we're going to send it to Amy so that she's.
She's aware.
Exactly, yeah. And then if they call me and they just want a contract, I'm going to do what I normally do.
Got you.
Yeah.
And just to calm nerves, who then is ultimately responsible if a record is missed? Let's say they want budget and contract and a resolution. And I say, this is all the budgets we have, Joanne says, this is all the contracts we have. Amy says, this is all the resolutions we have, and there really was a budget document that's missed. But Amy's the one that sent it out.
I mean, ultimately, the commissioners are responsible.
Well, I don't think there's any punishment of human error, but I understand.
For human error, and like you said, and first of all, they'd have to know that they missed the document, first of all. And if they were looking for a specific document, I would have hoped that they would have requested it. And request.
Well, we do have a business with Mrs. Griffiths who knows the records.
Yeah.
And she wants to know when you guys got them. So she knows the records there, she just wants the date of the email. So she doesn't even want the record itself, but she's asking for the record to see if we'll give it. I mean, there's all kinds of crazy stuff that happens.
I think maybe those are like case based.
The normal stuff doesn't make an issue for us. We've been handling it for years and years and years.
Because you know what, Todd?
We've had some weird things.
A lot of times they ask for a lot, and if you're scanning it to them electronically, there's a good chance that two pieces could stick together in the scanner, I mean.
Well, we just have a lot of people up here spending time double checking, triple checking.
Yeah.
You know, we've got three people all double checking for the same record, which is a lot of the time spent if they not need to.
And if we excluded a record that they were looking for inadvertently, I mean, the best solution is to apologize and immediately get what they're looking for.
So that with fees, are you going to review whether electronically we can charge? Are you guys even receptive to altering your current resolution to make it a little more clear of what we charge for and what we don't? I mean, we spent three hundred and.
Forty dollars.
Forty dollars to get the video copied. You know, part of our security cameras, the nice part is no one can mess with them. The bad part is no one can mess with them, we have to call the company out. So every time there's a payment record.
So do we charge for a video? Do we, is that not included?
Well, we said we were going to, but now we're kind of being told not to, just let her look at it. But again, we had to pay three hundred and forty dollars to have the video company come out and copy it to a thumb drive so that we had it.
We're not actually giving it to her, she's just coming in to review it?
See, the requester has the right to inspect the record before they ask for a copy and reproduce. And with your video, to make her a flash drive or her calls without her being able to see whether or not she even wanted it, that's kind of not the way you want to handle it to a requester. So I know it's just one of those isolated cases where.
At the same time, the only way to inspect that record is to sit in a security office, which is not where we want that member of the public being. And not just her, I'm not just saying, man, we just don't want people in the public sitting in a security office while they're trying to do security.
You know, like wanted two weeks' worth, so that's sitting there for eight hours looking at one day kind of thing. So, and that's per camera. That's why reducing it to a thumb drive and saying, well, you know, you look at it at your leisure or however you want to do it, but at least it's all there and you take it.
Are we starting to get a lot of video requests?
I've never had it before.
I know, this is.
I will have, I will have a detective that would come in and say, you know what? On this date at this time, there was this person in auto title, can you look to see? And I can go back, get a still figure picture of whatever and send it to the person. That's all I've ever had. We've never had anything that's asked for multiple days or multiple hours or anything like that before. That's why that was all new, yeah.
But I think this may continue.
Yeah, this is a new arena.
There's a group, it isn't just an individual. There's a group of people who all feel they're wronged or whatever you want to say. And one says, I'm asked for this, and the others say, well, I should too. It hasn't happened yet, but we're just kind of.
So we're going to incur these charges and just eat them, is that what we're going to do?
Well, let's, we'll get you an opinion on that, but for this one with Ms. Griffiths, I think that one you do just, because it's such an extreme case. Going forward though, if you get a lot of these requests for your videos, we'll deal with it. Hopefully you won't have too many of these, because is there anything on it? I mean.
Well, she wants to see Larry Lindbergh working, which we, we haven't bothered to watch it to see if he walks in, but we've admitted he was here.
Well, he was.
He was here, he came up to get a grant.
He had a grant, I signed it and.
But she still wants the video because she thinks.
But I don't believe that he came in probably the doors that she was asking.
Did she assume he came in for a different reason?
Yes, she said he had a video that he gave us.
But what the video will prove as to why he was coming is beyond me. But again, she wants it, she's entitled to it. The question is though, are we supposed to show out three hundred dollars every time somebody just says, hey, I want to see who came in your building today? We can deal with that, but we'll deal with that later. The other suggestion I have, your record retentions were, again, they were written twenty years ago when it maybe made more sense to keep paper around longer. The one example that's glaring is the videos for the doors need to be kept thirty days. There's absolutely no reason for us to keep door video for thirty days. The storage alone is astronomical and they serve absolutely no purpose. Again, our personal use is if there's a problem, somebody's belligerent or somebody breaks in, in which case that's within a day or two that we can get the video out.
Well, and I think that that particular record request or that records form was when you guys had your own video system up here for that one little door. I don't think it was meant to be for the whole building security. I think it was the one that you guys had in the center room that Amy got rid of.
Some other things were keeping paper eight years, it's like, well, why?
Is that an ORC thing, Todd or Chris?
Some are and some aren't. A lot of the ones I'm looking at, I think we have the discretion and we want to.
Yeah, the lady down at the state, at the Historical Society, looks at all that. And if there's something that she feels like that should be longer than you want or whatever, they'll let you know. But in most cases, I think they go on your recommendation on how long you feel you need to have it. You know, like after, you want to get rid of your invoices or whatever, after they've been audited for a year or whatever. But if you keep them five years, that's excessive. So I think that, you know, if you come up with any new dates, you just send it down to them and let them peruse it and say, yeah, these are all good and they'll timestamp it and give you the approval to make those changes.
Or is there something in your departments that kind of underfielded?
I mean, what I would recommend, number one, and you have a director meeting coming up, but maybe we each need to make a list of the records we think we're responsible for so that people like Amy and Julie, people come to the counter.
So they know.
They know who has what.
Yeah.
Then the other thing is have people review those records they think they're responsible for checking the retention schedules and making an honest assessment of, is it really behooves to have this for ten years or is it just taking up shelf space, collecting dust? The other issue is, and I'm not sure, like, you know, a lot of stuff we keep electronically anyways, do we have to keep the paper around that long? I mean, the electronic, I've got files from the eighties electronically, but the paper is long gone. So why are we keeping the paper so long? And those are, so I would recommend that the director be reviewed and maybe we can get together and have some revisions here over the next few months.
But the Ohio Historical Society has those guidelines or those rules, so make sure.
And it has to go past them, like she said, you've got to send it to the state to have it approved.
You have to get their sign off on making any changes to it, yeah.
You want to be careful with keeping your records.
Because they still stand by that, you know, for our record center, everything needs to be microfilmed. Even if you, and then the backup is the paper copy. They don't, they don't go for the electronic kind of stuff or whatever.
Right, because that can be altered.
And so, you know, microfilm is becoming shorter and shorter of, you know, existence, so.
Well, that, you know, we just had a rear request, a gentleman from the engineer's office came over and he needed several resolutions, some of which we had in the books and some of which we had to tell him to go to the record center. We had the microfilm here in this building, but we don't have a microfilm viewer. The other, the other thing, he was just a county employee, he would have loved to have been able to go electronically and search for it, but we don't have any of those records. So another recommendation I would make, and it seems to me like it would be fairly cheap, is have some of our microfilm turned into PDFs so that they can be, you know, on our drives. And again, if somebody really wants to see the original, then you can say, well, you've got to come look at the microfilm. But if all they want is just roughly reading and catch an idea, then at least we would have them.
Big payroll things, we had an outside company film them because our microfilm cameras didn't handle anything that big. But they also made, besides the microfilm, they made the PDF kind of thing so that there was.
I promise you, those are being used far more than the microfilm.
Absolutely, I'm sure, yeah, absolutely.
It was just weird, we had to take a county employee, we had to tell them, you can get these here, but you got to go there for that. It's just inconvenient, I guess, it's not, we have the records, but it was an inconvenient way to gain access to them.
And it wouldn't cost that much to do that.
I don't think it would cost a lot.
Was it like a couple thousand dollars for Janice to be filmed, put on microfilm, digitized, and then they destroyed the records? So, you know.
But then that speaks, do we want to begin doing that with more of our documents as well? That's a separate issue, but at least the microfilm we do have, I think it would be very easy to send that and say, keep it.
Yeah, I would say.
Can we do our next discussion, we do public comment, Nikki, and then come back and do that? Do you have a Instagram?
Because that's not going to be a quick thing.
Yeah, sure, I got plenty of time.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Thank you, guys.
Do we have anyone for public comments in here?
Hi, Happy New Year, how are you doing?
Wonderful, how about you?